I'm gonna call the meeting to order at what are 6:01?
So hang on just a second.
You gotta record.
Record it. So Teagan, could you record this also?
Yeah.
On that laptop?
Recording in progress.
So we're calling the meeting to order at 6:03. Let me put my glasses back on so I can see. Might be better if we don't see. All right. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Just that, you know, we definitely want to talk about the special town meeting for the fire station.
We've got a petition for the fire department, yeah.
And then I hadn't heard back from Chuck, so I didn't have the town highway report on the agenda. I think I got onto one.
So let's place it right after treasurer's report.
Yes, yep. That's a good place for it. And the special town meeting.
That's on there.
Okay, well actually that was a kind of a wrap-up of the special town meeting that we had this weekend. But yeah, I guess it could serve both purposes.
Yeah, well we'll do the town meeting review.
Okay.
You wanna do it all there?
Sure. I think that sounds good. Yep.
And then what else do we have? Is that all? I'll go right there. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any public comment? Statements of outrage or praise? Nothing? Oh, go ahead, Robin.
I would like to thank Laura and Gary Clark. Laura Murphy, that is, and Gary Clark for handling the situation that arose at the special town meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Bills to the town. I guess we can prove those by signing them. Not only any of us reviewed them yet. I have not either, okay? And then I'll take a motion and then comments over the meeting minutes.
Motion approved?
Motion approved by Chris.
Okay, I'll second.
There's a discussion. I read them too, so, okay. Halls in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We're flying. All right, so we're ready for CV fiber presentation.
That's you.
All right.
That's you.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me well enough?
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent. My name is Jerry Diamantidis. I am the chair of CV Fiber, Chair of the Governing Board. I've been asked to give a brief presentation and perhaps take some questions about CV Fiber, who we are and what we're doing. So let me start by saying that we are a municipal entity, a communications union district. We were created on Town Meeting Day in 2018 where I believe it was 14 towns voted on Town Meeting Day to create the Communication Union District. We currently have 21 towns and Woodbury joined in 2019. We have a single goal. Our existence is for one purpose, and that is to bring fast, reliable, affordable fiber internet to the residences and businesses in our member towns. We are aiming for a minimum of 100 megabits per second up and down. And that is really why we're here, why we exist. We're somewhat akin to the electric co-ops that are the rural electric co-ops around the country in that our rural membership has been unable to be served adequately by the incumbent providers. And the state realized that was a problem, created the opportunity for Communication Union Districts to be formed. And here we are. There are now maybe, there might be as many as a dozen Communication Union Districts in the state. Maybe it's a little less, I'm not sure, the exact number. So we, as I said, we're a municipal entity, so each town provides one delegate and one alternate delegate to the governing board. So either the delegate or the alternate has a vote at our board meetings. Each town has one vote then at our board meeting. We meet on the second Tuesday of every month as a board. We have two delegates. We have a delegate and an alternate from Woodbury. Becky Browning is the delegate, Skip Lindsay is the alternate. And Becky had reached out to me and asked that if I would be able to attend your meeting. We have four officers, a chair, a vice chair, a treasurer, and a clerk. And we do all of our business through committees. We have an executive committee, a finance and audit committee, policy communications, and also business development committee. So we, in some ways, we run similar to the select board. I encourage everyone, please, to go to our website. It's gonna be a lot more informative than me. cvfiber.net. No spaces, just cvfiber.net. One thing that I really want to emphasize here, and I think this is critically important for all select boards to know and to remember, and that is that no town tax money goes to the CUDs. We have no taxing authority. Our revenues come from grants, loans, and subscription fees from our users. So there is no town tax money that goes to the CUDs. I'd like to talk about Woodbury a little bit and the internet situation as we see it in Woodbury. We have 782 addresses that are listed by the Public Service Department, out of which no address has 100 over 100 service. So it looks like there is probably no fiber in Woodbury at all. Almost half the town, 48%, has 100 over 20 service. And 100 over 20 is a threshold for federal construction grant funding. So approximately half of the residences, 372 or 48%, appear to at least have on paper 100 over 20 service. Less than 100 over 20, and that would be eligible for current federal construction grant funding. That's 410 residences, 52%, approximately half the town. So the way we're looking at this is half the town is underserved when it comes to internet access. And we have some activities that are currently going on. We have pre-construction engineering and design that is going on right now. You'll find that sometime this spring will be folks from Tilson Technology Management is a consulting firm that we've hired, an engineering firm, and they will be out doing a poll inventory. They'll be looking at the utility polls in Woodbury, most of which I believe are going to be Hardwick Electric polls. They'll be looking at those polls and gathering information about what's already hanging on the polls, what are the conditions of the polls, and what kind of work would be necessary for fiber construction to hang fiber on those polls. So that's gonna happen this spring. We are also, we have hired the National Rural Telecommunication Co-op, NRTC. They are doing our design. And they are currently in the process of designing for internet service in all of our towns. And that design will also be completed in 2022. Right now on our schedule, we have construction in Woodbury slated for 2023. I don't know that it will all be completed in 2023, but that is our tentative construction start. We do not have a construction firm onboard yet. But we do have a service provider, and the service provider will be Waitsfield Telecom. They are a local internet service provider that is going to be working with three other CUDs as their service provider, us, NEK, and Maple Broadband. So moving forward, we currently have about $3 million in grant funding for pre-construction engineering and design. We've barely spent any of it yet. We've only recently gotten that money and we've been working with our contractors to develop the plan forward through design and to get to RFPs for construction. There's approximately $9 million more available for grant funding for CV Fiber. We anticipate that the total project cost is going to be about $50 million. Now, there is anticipated to be another round of grant funding of somewhat equivalent to the $9 million we just mentioned, but that is not a certainty. And we don't know when that may be available. And all of this is federal grant funding. And then we are also working with Washington Electric Co-op for service areas that overlap with Washington Electric Co-op to potentially use a RUS, USDA Rural Utility Service loan. We would collaborate with WEC, Washington Electric Co-op, to get a low-interest loan to help fund our construction. Apart from that, everything, all of our construction has to be financed, funded through the subscription fees that we charge for our service. And the only other opportunity that we know of right now for construction funding is the town ARPA funds. And I know that the towns are considering how to best spend those funds. Broadband is something that falls into one of the categories where that money can be spent. I don't know if folks are aware, but there is a, the Vermont Broadband Committee that was established by the executive and the legislature. They control the dispersal of grant funds to the CUDs. And what they've done is they've held back some of these federal grant funds in order to have a matching program with town ARPA funds. So they're willing to match dollar for dollar. I believe it's up to $1.5 million per town. They are looking, they will match dollar for dollar for any ARPA funds that are allocated towards broadband construction, CUD broadband construction. Those funds would be used in the town. They would be allocated to construction in the town. It hasn't been, I don't know that we've fully negotiated yet with any town exactly what we would do or how we would do it with them, but this is a brand-new program. And if the select board is interested in getting matching funds from the Vermont Community Broadband Board for their CUD, there needs to be a letter of commitment to the Vermont Community Broadband Board by September of 2022. So we are a group of volunteers with various professional backgrounds. We have hired consultants. We've been through a vetting process, an RFP process. We have the state, originally was the Public Service Department, and now it is the Vermont Community Broadband Board that is looking over our shoulder for all the things that we do and all the money that we spend and all of our grant applications, et cetera. So there is that level of oversight. And we are mostly working through our consultants. As I said, our design is with NRTC, the National Rural Telecommunications Co-op. They are a national organization. And our internet service provider is going to be Waitsfield Telecom, a longtime telecom and internet provider here in Vermont, south-central Vermont. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if I can't answer them, I can follow up with answers for you. I'm not exactly sure what kind of information you have about the CUDs or what kind of information you have about CV Fiber, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm curious about how your organization would make sure that if ARPA funds did go toward this, that it wouldn't be pooled in with other people's funds, that it would be specifically allocated to Woodbury?
So I'll answer that in two ways. First of all, any dollar that we don't need to borrow is a savings to our subscribers because everything is at cost, right? We're a municipal entity. One of the things that we've been thinking about a lot is that the drops that go from the pole on the street to the home, that installation, we have been thinking about allocating town funds to subsidize the installation in that town. So those installations usually come at a fee. Sometimes it's $100, sometimes it's more. A lot of it depends on how far, how far the residence is from the distribution pole. But one of the ways that we've been thinking about keeping the money in the town is to use those funds for these what we call drops, for these installation drops that would otherwise the resident would have to pay. So that way, the money would stay in the town and would be a direct benefit to the subscriber and the resident.
My question is, that doesn't really get to the source of the issue because you're obviously gonna have to build out from some hub point, correct, to get service here? Because I'm assuming this will be parallel to the current network that's there, right? So I think to add on to Laura's question, if they were to give you some ARPA funds in the next 12 to 24 months and match this grant, and you have a $50 million problem, how are you gonna get a system built out to Woodbury to provide service to the clients here in one to two years?
Oh, I see. Okay. So we are, that's a very good question. Let me clarify. We have a $50 million problem for getting fully built out, okay? We don't have anywhere near a $50 million problem to get to the underserved. And our goal is to get to the underserved first. So we are, our plans, we have instructed the design team, and our approach to all of this is to get the internet to the underserved first. So within the first few years, we are focusing on those addresses that are underserved. Now, sometimes you have to pass through an area that's served to get to the underserved. But we are not overbuilding cable. We're not overbuilding existing fiber to the extent that we can avoid it. Sometimes, as I said, you need to overbuild in order to get where you want to be. But we are absolutely focusing on the underserved.
That's right, but you're coming, where is the hub we're gonna be coming from? Because we're a long ways, we're probably close to the end of your build-out, I would guess. My concern is getting, so say it's Barry. You're 30, 27, 28 miles. Are you gonna build 28 miles of fiber out to Woodbury to serve 14 customers per se? I don't know how many, you know, for any money we might get. That's what I'm trying to get at. If we were to give you some money, how many customers are gonna get served in Woodbury in the next, say, two years, for example?
Well, our intention is to get service to those 480, 410, as identified by the Public Service Department, there are 410 residences or E911 addresses. There are 410 of them that are underserved. And our intention is to target those. And we are building a ring structure throughout all of our 21 towns. And we have, I don't remember, and it hasn't been, first of all, it hasn't been fully defined. But we are going to be using WEC substations for a large, to a large degree. And I think it's certainly not as far as, certainly not as far as Barry. It may be Cabot or Worcester. Cabot, Worcester, Callis maybe, some, there's definitely, certainly closer than Barry. And we're building a ring, and of course, we're building redundancy into that ring. And we are also adding redundancy by connecting with NEK Broadband, which is also up in that area. So it's not quite as if we're coming from a central hub and going out in spokes. We actually have a ring, and we're coming out from the ring towards the outside and towards the inside with multiple hubs that are along that loop, if you will.
But we don't know how many you'd serve in the next, say, two years. That's the kind of where I was trying to get at. In town.
I can't say exactly how many.
That's fair. I just wanted to know, okay.
Well, I guess some of it would depend on who was interested.
Right, I just wanted to know what the answer was, because this... Because we're pretty rural, so there's a lot of streets with very few houses on them. So you're gonna have a lot of long runs for one or two houses, is what the issue will be.
That's exactly right. That is, and what we understand and the reason we came into being is that for the most part, that's not a profitable enterprise. And that's why folks don't have internet today. Because it's not profitable to run so much fiber for so few homes.
Right next to our cell phone.
And of course, with our topography, you can't get there from here. So, you know, there are areas where you, the poles don't continue over the mountain. And even though it's only three miles as a crow flies, it's a 15-minute drive, a 15-mile drive. You know, that confounds the issue.
Yeah.
Which is why we're extremely fortunate to have grant money to help us lower our subscription rates and to also to be able to take the opportunity, hopefully, to be able to use low-interest loans.
Perfect, thank you.
One of my questions was, you know, just in repairs, you know, so you have these one-time funds, ARPA fund, whatever. Then how does this get maintained? You know, it wouldn't be, the town of Woodbury wouldn't be on the hook for maintaining it, correct? Because it's done through Waitsfield, so it's there. I mean, how do repairs happen?
Like they have their own line curve?
Who pays repairs?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're, so Waitsfield is expanding their enterprise. They're, by the time the CUDs approach some kind of build-out, Waitsfield will have doubled the size of the area and the people that they're serving. So they are ramping up. Maintenance costs, of course, are built into the subscription fees. So that's a, that is a part of what everybody pays every month. I mean, in the same way that you do with your electric rates, so your maintenance is built into that. We would do the same, very much do the same thing. I don't know exactly where Waitsfield is going to build their northern facility, for lack of a better term, but it's probably going to be up in an area where they can straddle their responsibilities for NEK Broadband and straddle their responsibilities for us on our northern end because they're already down there by Waterbury in the southern end of where we are. They're very close to Waterbury.
So they're gonna be...
So they will be expanding.
So they're gonna be using existing poles for the most part, like sort of co-locating with the other services that are provided on the same poles? There's not gonna be...
Absolutely, we'll be...
There's not gonna be big towers or other big structures that are happening that people might not like in the town?
They're, we are focusing on providing fiber that will be hanging on existing poles. We are not looking to build towers to provide Wi-Fi. That's not part of our plan. We intend to get to everyone or as close to everyone as we possibly can by using existing poles and hanging fiber. And we certainly aren't doing anything like they're talking about in Worcester. But that's not, that is not something that we're designed for.
What are they doing in Worcester?
The discussion of putting a 200-foot tower to...
We have one just for internet already.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Doesn't work.
That wasn't very popular recently in Callis, so...
Yeah, we have had one for 10 years.
Yeah, it's never worked well.
I never used the service, but it's up there still.
No, there's a lot of problems with anything that requires some kind of line of sight.
We have trees with leaves on them.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, forgive this question because it's not, it's gonna reveal my ignorance, but there's been some questions in town about, you know, why are we going fiber? Aren't things progressing in terms of satellites and other ways to get this kind of service to people? The question is, this seems so sort of, you know, antiquated to be...
Like a Starlink.
Yeah, putting fiber up.
Right, so, so the, again, with Starlink, you have the line-of-sight problem and you have weather problems. And with fiber, you're not gonna get any faster than light. And what we have with fiber is an investment in the hardware, if you will, the fiber itself, that is a 50-year investment. And the technology that sends the light through the fiber is always improving. So that the amount of information that you can get through the same piece of glass is going to continue to increase over time. So I understand your question, and it's actually a very good question. But I don't think that's going to be the answer for Vermont. Unfortunately, it would be, you know, maybe better if we could, if we were out in Kansas somewhere where all you had to do was look up, but that's not our situation. So it's the fiber needs to be hung, and then the software and the technology behind it will continue to increase and improve.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? I think we're out of questions.
Well, thank you.
Well, we thank you for your time.
Yeah, I hope this was worthwhile.
It was, it was informative, thank you.
Hope to be in touch with you more in the future as we're moving forward.
Very good.
And I will log off and let you go on with your meeting.
Have a great night.
See you again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Take care, everybody.
Okay. It's Robin's turn.
We have started getting requests in for the absentee ballots for town...
We have started getting requests in for the absentee ballots for town meeting day. I think I processed twenty-eight of them so far.
Okay.
Getting them through email requests plus people walking in, asking for them. And, um, the special town meeting was a learning experience for me.
I think it was for a lot of us.
Yes.
No boxing gloves.
It's good, it was good.
And the land record recordings is still coming in on a regular basis. And that's about what I've been doing for the last three weeks.
Perfect. Okay, so people can get in and request the absentee ballot now?
Yes.
Very good, okay.
And if somebody didn't get a town report
You have, you have some, okay.
or want an extra copy, we do have extras, so they can have a copy. And we also put that on front porch for them today.
Perfect. All right, thank you, Robin.
Yeah.
Treasurer.
Well, treasurer is not here. I thought maybe they would join us remotely, but, um, not, so I guess we don't have a town treasurer report.
Okay, we have a pile of bills to sign though, so that's always a good thing.
So that.
Must be the bills will get paid.
Yeah.
All right. I don't need someone breaking my kneecaps.
And I don't know if, if, you know, probably if Brandy was here, she would bring up this, um, this, this new quote. So maybe we could have, discuss that under the.
Sure, why don't we do that? So we have a, what do you call this?
Apparently there's something.
Review an estimate to, for our contract, okay.
I think this is a, just a, a maintenance thing. I know, um, last week when.
It's what we budgeted, I think.
Yeah, I, I was walking by and the thing was making a whistling sound, uh, like a, like something was wrong.
Okay.
And this looks like there was some type of repair.
So you got a bill. Okay, this is the estimate for our annual. Oh, no, it isn't, sorry. Fluid level sensor, so it's just a bill we have to pay.
But Donnie called down to the office, Donnie Turgeon, the maintenance person at the school, and said that Brookfield was there.
Oh, oh, I see, so it's an estimate to repair. It's an estimate.
And he was wondering how often do they come to do maintenance on.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
And then we're checking it once a month.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, so I think last week there was some, maybe the fluid level was.
Yeah, so it says estimate to replace fuel, fluid level sensor, the polar thirty R Z.
So that's why it was making noise.
Okay. Which was the problem a couple of years ago.
Correct.
Yep.
Same problem.
Yep.
So I would entertain a motion to get the generator fixed.
Make a motion to make the repairs on the generator for fluid levels.
I'll second that.
For five hundred two dollars and twenty-three cents? Perfect.
And, and it may be that they've already made the repair.
Do you mind if, is that an invoice?
It sort of looks like an invoice.
Yeah, well, we'll have them do it anyway. I can't see what you.
Although it says estimate.
Yeah, it does. It's probably not done, so we need to do it anyway.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion about it further?
Well, we had discussed in the past having a, 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 a more frequent maintenance schedule. Well, and we sort of walked away from that, because we thought.
I thought that's when the fire department.
That's when we decided to have us do the monthly checks.
And so if the checks were good.
Yeah, it just, we're not gonna pick up this.
Yeah, it's more the sensor than the actual.
The sensor failed.
It was a sensor failure.
Right.
So we're never gonna even know.
Right, well, we pick it up on the monthly check.
We'll know if it isn't working and, and, you know, if we hear this thing making a sound, that was probably an alarm. You and I heard that, weren't we?
Yeah.
We were there.
Yeah, yeah.
We were thinking, oh, it's just cold, it's just making noise.
You're mad, I was mad too, it was cold.
That's what that was, I think.
So, sounds like this is a repair that just needs to be made.
Just needs to be made, just the sensor went bad.
Yeah.
Cause we'll continue to check it.
Yeah, I'm sure the fluid level is probably fine.
Reasonable agreement.
Yeah.
To check it on a regular basis.
The sensor isn't working.
So does the fire department check the same thing that Brookfield does when they come to us again?
We just checked the, the antifreeze in the oil.
It's like checking the antifreeze in the oil in your car.
Like checking your car. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we're gonna look at it, you know, if this buzzer had been buzzing, we would have heard it.
Right.
And again, like, the custodians are going by, hopefully they'll, I can't deal with this. They'll, I don't know how people wear glasses with these things.
Yeah, so Don, I mean, obviously Don heard it.
He heard it, so the system worked, we picked up the problem, so.
Yeah.
But there are repairs that we can't possibly intend to make, and that's why we have Brookfield Service on call.
Right, that's why they do their twice-a-year check, which they do more checks and, and then we're do, we're doing, we're just doing a, a fluid check and it's, still there.
Yeah, I mean, we have an annual fee that we pay and then anything, anything above that, like this replacement and repair, that's a, that's an addition to that annual fee.
But they would never pick up on that unless it had actually failed, so.
Correct, it's one of those, it's like your transmission is, works until it doesn't.
You got, you know.
So obviously, they don't have a monitor system when this thing is making.
A noise.
A noise.
You probably can buy one, but I don't know if we wanna pay for that.
We do have that for.
Yeah, I'm sure they have a control that you can connect to the internet, you might could consider that.
We could. We do have to pay for that.
For monitoring.
But I think that it's a, we're aware enough and we're around that thing enough that we, you know, with regular checks and.
So I think it worked.
There are hundreds of kids at school.
Don heard it.
Somebody heard it, it got fixed.
We heard it, Chris and I heard it too, but we didn't really know what it was all about.
Shut up, it was complaining because it was cold out, and I did that too.
Well, shut up.
All right, well, so I might as well vote, I'll call the question, all those that say aye. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, um.
Shall be fixed.
Is Brandy, is she in kind of communication? Should we tell her to, to okay this?
Yeah, she'll be in the office tomorrow. She came back today.
You wanna tell her?
Sure.
We pass, go ahead and get it fixed.
We approved it and, um, should, as soon as they can fix it.
Town meeting reveal. I was at work, so someone can fill me in.
Do you wanna do the town highway report?
Oh, yeah, sorry Chuck, you're next.
No problem.
Town, is it eighty-five there today?
Don't tell us.
No, actually, uh, you'll feel good. It was only sixty-two minutes today.
I had forty-eight on Saturday.
Yeah, I hear ya. Yep. Uh, we had a frost Monday and Tuesday morning last week.
Yeah, boy.
First one they've had in twelve years.
Oh my, they're in special meetings to.
Try to deal with.
Give me oranges.
The iguanas were falling out of the trees.
Yeah, yeah, they're having a bad orgy or anything, but, um, you'll find a bill in there somewhere. I don't, Brandy knows about it and she was supposed to have paid Greg back today. The company that we bought the mowing machine for, for the loader, has sold out.
Of course they have.
Bottom is considering not making that machine anymore. So Greg and I talked it over and we talked to Brandy about him, about getting it paid and everything, and we ordered three sets of teeth. And they showed up, I think he said Friday. So we have four sets of teeth for that mowing machine now, so we should be in good shape. Um, the total bill was sixteen hundred, I think, but if they, if they stop making it, they're not gonna make the teeth. And there's other places to get the teeth, but they're not exactly the same and we just figured we'd be better off to do it in one lump, some haven't done it.
Sounds good to me.
Do you, do you have a sense of how long those four sets of teeth would last?
I guess it depends on.
Depends on how many rocks you hit.
Yeah, you're, that's.
Well, yeah, and the biggest reason we went with these is because it has cutters on both sides. So when they get wore out on one side, you take them off, turn them around, put them on the other side, and the only ones that we could find that were anywhere near compatible right now with that machine, they're only one-sided. So in, in manner of speaking, we actually have eight sets of teeth. We have four set, but there's a tooth on both sides of them. When you wear one side out, you turn it over and you have a new tooth. So we should be, I would think for six or eight years, we'd be in good shape.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
And, um, I've been in touch, where I've had three conversations with Dave Upson from Harvick, the town manager. And we've got it pretty well worked out. Uh, we've gotta put it on hold until I get back in the spring so we can have a meeting with Woodbury Select Board, Greg and I, Dave and Tom Fadden. His road foreman.
Foreman, yeah.
So that we can get it set down as to what's gonna happen. But the way Dave and I've got it worked out now, that we're gonna haul their sand pile on our rainy days. So when we're looking for something for the trucks to do, they can be hauling Harvick sand to offset the hours that are go, that they put in up in West Woodbury. And they're gonna start keeping a log of the hours they do up in West Woodbury so that come springtime, we know exactly what we gotta do.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And Chuck, is that specifically gonna be for grading or is that for all of West Woodbury maintenance? Is, is it plowing too?
Just the plowing. We're gonna continue with the grading and the road.
I think we still do the grading and the scrabbling and.
We had, but I just was making sure.
So Chuck, did Dave, uh, David mention anything about, um, he's, he's talked to me about, um, plowing, uh, you know, how, on the Nichols Pond Road, how they plow to turn around? He's talked to me about plowing all the way up close to the Cahagan setup, um, for.
Right, he wants to have the road straightened out so he can plow to the Nichols Dam Turn.
Right, yep.
And I told him that I would talk to the select board, but I was pretty sure that if he was gonna continue to plow it, that we would get it up in the shade. I mean, it's.
Yeah, we had talked about that a little bit earlier.
Benefit to Harvick and Woodbury with them having revenue coming in up there.
Yep.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking for your thoughts on it, I guess.
Well, I know we had talked about it a little bit, um, and it definitely is a road that could use some work this coming summer. I mean, there's water that sort of runs right down it, um, and, and pretty much ruts it up pretty good for a stretch.
Right, yeah, and, but that's gonna take some, uh, there's gonna have to be two, three kilometers put in there at least to get that water problem gone. And then it'd probably be a matter of resurfacing the whole road pretty much whole. Well, not in one year, but over the course of probably three years, we'll have to resurface that pretty much whole length up through there. The first year, if we can get it with the doubt, where they don't have trouble piling it and stuff, will be a big deal and then after that it'll be, cause Greg and, uh, Greg and the boys put in a bunch of three-inch minus up in there, but you can't hone it.
Right, that's, that's, that's up above Cahagan to the ledge, yeah, which was really starting to become undrivable when they did that. Yeah, you can't grade that stuff.
No, and actually from Cahagan's up, as far as the class four road, that's still pretty good, but from Cahagan's back to the Harvick Town Line.
It's bad.
It needs some attention. I, and I know it needs some attention, but I need to get up there to see exactly what I think it needs, because I haven't, I haven't thought about it and the fact that we were gonna keep plowing. But I guess that's pretty much up to you guys, what you wanna do and how much you wanna do about it.
Well, I guess you can discuss that with the new select board in the spring, I guess. We'll, we'll have.
Roll the dice.
We'll, we'll have one former select board member there, but Paul and I will be gone.
Is this your last week?
No, next time.
Till town meeting day.
Town meeting day.
Till town meeting day.
So we'll have one.
We'll have some happy, you guys.
We'll have one more meeting the day before town meeting.
Yeah, neither one of you have reconsidered, right?
No, I just don't have the time, unfortunately.
I know.
I haven't had a day off for ten days right now.
I, I will probably continue as a town highway administrative assistant. So, you know, I'm, and that will be up to the new select board. But, you know, to cover the grants and the grant reporting and, um, you know, stuff like that, I'm, I'm happy to continue with that if the new select board will let me to do that.
And you got my vote.
You better let him.
Yep.
Or you'll be doing it.
Get another vote.
Selfish motivation, kicking in. I know what my vote would be. It's either.
And actually, not being on the select board will allow me to pay better attention to that whole road, which is sort of, I haven't had much time for recently. Things are kind of falling by the wayside there.
Um, other than that, I guess that's about all I got, uh. Oh, I can't think of a name right now, but the one that was so worked up over the cemetery up there, across the road from cemetery, she called with a broken mailbox post that Harvick didn't hit, but the snow pushed it over and I told her that we didn't fix things like that. Majors, majors.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so she was all right with it, so they were gonna fix the mailbox post and I.
Okay.
Dave and I'd already talked about it, so.
Okay.
It was, it was good in there.
I know that our road crew, if it was, the, our road crew that did it, they do sort of have a policy of fixing mailboxes if they, if they wang them with the plow.
If they hit the mailbox and damage the mailbox, they fix it. But if the snow, if the post is out so close to the road, then just the snow pushes it over. We don't fix them.
You need to push your mailbox back.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's what needs to happen, they need to set the mailbox back. In fact, I got permission to do one on the Scribner Road. It was right out there, so then it got broke off every big storm. And the place just sold and I get people's name, it was a lady and she was getting ready to rent it, and I told her what the problem was and I asked her if a road crew could go over and move that, that mailbox. And she says she didn't care whatsoever, so I actually sent the town over to move that mailbox out of the way so it wouldn't get broke. And Greg says now it's working great, so.
And was, was that the person that was complaining last winter about the mailbox?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yep.
But we've since taken care of that problem.
Okay, great.
I guess that's about all I got.
All right, thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yeah, you have a good afternoon or good evening.
Enjoy the nice weather.
Yeah, take your care.
I'm waiting.
When are you coming back, May?
No, I'll be back, uh, around the twentieth of April.
Okay. I got some work for you, probably I got need done, I'll call you at some point.
Perfect.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right, I'm gonna sign off, you guys are all set.
Yeah, we're fine, yep.
All right, you have a good day.
See you, Chuck. Where's our camera?
See you later, Mom.
Bye.
I don't know where to wait. Okay. Uh, town meeting review.
Yes, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna have, um, a pre-town meeting, um, meeting on Saturday, February twenty-sixth. The postcards went out, I think. And we'll, we'll, it's gonna be in the town hall, we'll have this, uh, remote access set up. So, hope, hopefully that'll help, um, people come who don't wanna be there in person. And, you know, this stuff is pretty much, uh, the equipment that we got is pretty much set up for use in the town halls.
Anywhere we want.
Yeah, anywhere we want. It's a little bit small for the gym. Um, at least the monitor, I think, would be, um, people, but, um, for here, it's, uh, kind of fills up the room with equipment. But, um, yeah, so, but we'll have that set up for the pre-town meeting also. Robin, do you wanna talk at all about the actual voting?
Michael, can we just say what time? So we have it on the record?
I think it's Saturday, February twenty-sixth. Starts at ten AM.
Ten AM is what we're gonna do again, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we thought Saturday would allow, hopefully allow more people to.
I'm working again. Of course, I work, I gotta work on the twenty-sixth, I hope somebody's gonna be here. Yes, I told you, my new job has been dynamic. I work Saturday, I work Sunday, and I'm working the twenty-sixth.
I think that's, can't think of anything. And, so how, on, on, um, town meeting day, when we're voting, will we be do, voting on school budgets and stuff too?
Yes.
You'll have both ballots.
Yes.
So have those ballots.
So you'll end up having three ballots.
Three ballots?
Yep.
Okay, yep. So you'll be needing people like ballot clerks and then people to go do the counting?
Yes.
Okay.
The next couple of weeks, so I will be getting hold of people.
Okay.
Asking.
All right.
Call me.
Get ready, everybody, Robin's gonna be calling.
I'm happy to help too.
Yeah, I'm happy to help as well.
One thing I, it would be nice is to contact OSSU, I'm thinking especially of Hazen. Um, I was a counter there last year and we got there right after seven o'clock and Laura was there too, I believe. And we waited almost an hour and a half for Greensboro to show up. And we couldn't start counting until they showed up. So we're just sitting around the firehouse. And we didn't get done until around midnight.
So they need to make sure that their members are there.
I would like, yeah.
Well, it sounds like each town is gonna count the ballots and then the total goes this year.
Oh.
So you don't have to have a, a collective counting?
It doesn't sound that way.
Okay, well, it was a collective counting last year.
Yeah, it was.
That sounds really bizarre.
Yeah, we had to co-mingle the votes. Well, that's, so we'll be able to count them at the town hall?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, that sounds better.
That sounds a lot better.
Yeah. Good. I'm happy to hear that. Midnight is very late for me.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm ready for bed now.
And then, um, at the special town meeting that we had, when we voted on our first article, we had 112 voters sign in. So it was 52 for yes to go Australian ballot and 53 no to stay as in person.
It was very close, yeah.
Yep, but by the end of it, we ended up having 114 voters, cause two more came in after we voted on that first article.
Yeah, and after the first article, some people started leaving, so.
Right, cause it was, yeah.
And then, you know, just for the record, um, cause I think after the second article, um, which also was a, a no vote, um, a lot of people left. And there was another article that we, uh, voted on to form a committee when the new select board is, is in place.
Okay, so, cause I got an email. That's what I was gonna ask. Somebody wants to be on the committee, so I should pass that to the new.
New select board.
New select board.
That I can do.
Cause you know, it really, there are good reasons on both sides of the, um.
Well, I had five people in my house would all come, but everybody was working.
Yeah, so.
We were just not able to be there today.
And the fact that it was so close, I think we really need to figure out something that will, you know, address everybody, um, and that's what this committee, um, hopefully will come up with it. And maybe that in the future it would be Australian ballot and if, if we do that, then we really need to figure out a way to make the pre-town meeting, um, vital and as well attended as the town meeting.
Exactly, that would have been my thing is if you have a, a live discussion meeting and then you can still have an Australian ballot vote, that would kinda.
And that's that hybrid option that I think Jonah and some other people had.
Which is what I would have voted for, just cause I'm getting in a situation now where I have to work when the work happens, so I can't always guarantee to be there.
Saturday might be a better day.
Right.
So traditional.
Cause even if you couldn't make the live meeting, it gives you a whole 12 hour day to go vote, for example.
Or you could even vote ahead.
Right, you could do your absentee ballot. So yeah, that's what I, I mean, I would have voted to do that, just cause it's not that I don't like the meeting, it's just, I'm not, can't guarantee I'm always gonna be there.
And you know, there were good, good reasoning on both sides of the issue, um, so.
But it seems like it's evenly split enough that it needs to be explored more.
We need to figure out a way to, to, um, make it work so that we have the most people able to, to vote. And hopefully that would be, something would be, uh, set up or agreed upon, um, by the time town meeting would come in 2023.
Which it would still need to be a live vote, right? Cause you can't do a.
Yeah, we would still have to have a special town, whatever.
Or do a regular town meeting. It just has to be a live vote.
Right.
Whatever hap, whatever happens is gonna have to be a regular town meeting for another full calendar year.
Yep.
So, so that was another part of the, the meeting that, um, that a lot of people, I think most of the people who wanted Australian ballot weren't there to hear, um, so it was to get that on the record. So now we have another special town meeting, um, that's been, uh, petition has been for, to vote on the, um, the firehouse and I have a couple of questions, um. I'm wondering, um, first of all, I'm kind of curious to know why this wasn't on the articles for the, um, for this year, um. And then the other is, um, is what year, what fiscal year, um, is the fire department thinking about? Cause we've already made a budget for fiscal 20, year 23. So I'm just wondering, um, is that the year that you're thinking of, um, for the first expenditure? Or is it the following fiscal year?
That all depends on how fast everything moves, right?
Well, I, I think in fairness to the town, it would have to be the following year, to be honest with you, because you've already, you've already, you're gonna have already voted on the budget by the time the special meeting happens.
Yes.
So I don't see how you can recycle unless you have a whole nother special town meeting to reapprove. I'm, I'm not gonna mention that to people in this town.
Right, okay.
And the way, cause what we would have to do is go out and get the, get the financing and then you, you won't owe anything until you start spending it. And so like the payment probably wouldn't even become due till the following year.
It would have to be a two-year cycle.
Cause if they approve it, you'd have to go in and get permits and all your final designs. It could be months before you're in construction. It just, yeah, more than likely it would be.
So I wonder, um, can, in the special meeting, could we amend this to say fiscal year 24?
I don't think we can do that.
Sounds like a dog.
I bet it's one of Diana's dogs.
Nope, sorry.
Oh, yeah, the hairball. I don't, I don't think we can commit a future town meeting.
I unmuted myself because I have a question, but I didn't see a place to raise my hand, so I raised my hand.
Yep.
What are you talking about?
So, um, we, we had just received, uh, petition, uh, from the fire department or, or organized by the fire department, um, for a special town meeting to vote on, um, financing, um, the new fire station. So, um.
We've lost your voice Diana.
She said thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I, I could read that to you, um.
No, it's up, that's fine.
Essentially the same article.
Well, it's, um, it says, shall, I'm gonna read it. Shall the town appropriate up to $85,000 to the Woodbury Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated for the purpose of financing the cost for construction of a new fire and emergency operations center at a total cost of $1,300,000? So, um, and we were just talking about, um, you know, what fiscal year that, um, first, um, appropriation would be budgeted under and, um, and it sounds like it would be fiscal year 24. And then, um, would this be something that you would put on the agenda each year for a certain appropriation?
We'd have to, cause we can't commit future town meetings.
The only way, the only way this can be a one and done is if the select board decided to build the building.
And own it.
Lease it or something along those lines.
Cause that's what he's.
Do it ourselves. We have to do this every single year.
Right, okay, alright.
Does it say for how many years?
It doesn't, no.
20.
Like Chance just said, this would be an article that would probably be on the town warning meeting.
We had to take the 20-year language off. We had to take the 20-year language off because we're committing to future town meetings.
We can't commit.
Oh. So we have to come back for 19 more years. If this got approved, we have to come back 19 more years asking the same question every single year and hopefully it goes through.
Yeah, just like we do with our truck financing.
Yeah, so it'd be just like.
But you're still thinking it's gonna be the 20 years even though you had to take that language out of there.
Probably will be 20 years. It's a 20-year construction.
Yeah, it's a bond, yeah.
That's the, that was the concern that we had when we first talked about this was that, you know, that we have to, if, if we commit to it, we're.
You're committing.
We're committing.
Yeah, cause they'll come take it back and they'll have a.
Because then we're in real trouble. If we don't vote on it, yeah, then the fire department.
The fire department is really.
Been saying for years because every time we do a vote for a truck, it's the same thing. You say no next year, then what do we do with the trucks? Well, the same thing we do with the fire station. They come taking. Uh, it's not, it's not ours to pay for.
Yeah, so that's unnerving in a way.
It is, because all it takes is, is, is a change in the direction of the wind of the voters and all of a sudden, you don't have funding for things.
One, no vote and there's no funding.
Just like all of our funding though.
Yep, that's all of our funding.
Yep.
So Paul, can you use your iPhone to remind me of just how, I know there's like, you have to warn it.
Sixty, we have 60 days, cause we were just chatting about trying to push it into April, just try to, I, I think our thought is to do a live meeting. If everybody.
We have to, we, there's no.
Yeah, yeah, that's, cause we think people ought to be able to discuss, is we don't wanna go down that's, the, the answer to your question as to why we didn't do it before was we wanna have a live meeting.
Live meeting, yeah.
And I didn't wanna get caught in the whole, uh, Australian ballot thing again. So we can push this out into April.
Okay. So it sounds like this could be something that the new select board.
I'd like us to schedule it, cause we're here, we had.
Alright, okay.
So where does that work? If you guys started off and the new select board come in, I mean, how does that work?
Well, because it has to be, it has to be warned anyway. We, it isn't our discretion as to whether it gets warned or not.
It's any select board, no matter what its makeup, we'll have to, I mean, it's warned.
Cause it's a petition, it has to, they have, we have to put it on, so I don't see anybody, we can't just schedule the meeting.
Yeah, so the future select board will have to still.
They'll still.
Within those, you know, we have to.
That's, that's all Vermont statutes.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who's on the board, it's the board.
Right, that was a concern, cause some thought the board was pushing like the, the Australian ballot thing and I had to kept telling them, oh, it was a petition. We just have to schedule the meeting.
Actually Brandy brought up nicely after the town meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't the choice of the select board.
No, we didn't have a choice.
We didn't have a choice.
And what's it, what's that to, to schedule?
So we can push it out into April, cause we have 60 days to schedule the meeting.
I think the warmer the weather.
The more attendance we're gonna have and the easier it's gonna be to work.
How about April 20th? And we could do it on a Saturday, again, April 23rd.
I think we should do it on a Saturday.
That one's open for me. I'm open right now and if I, if I schedule it right now, it will be open.
Alright, hang on to April 27th, let's do that.
The three before that, I'm teaching at fire school in Morrisville, the three before that.
Okay, so April 20.
April 23rd.
23rd.
23rd, yeah. Alright, and it needs to be warned 30 days ahead, is that true?
I believe so.
Yeah. That's all in statute too, so.
And it gets us time to get out and do our.
And beat the bushes, I bet.
Which you didn't get to do last year, which is unfortunate, cause a lot of the comments we got was none of information, but we couldn't do any information last year. We started the whole thing.
We only had one person tell the fire station.
Which was frustrating, cause you send that stuff out and nobody calls, right? We really want people to call and if they've got questions and today, my service guy was out there for five hours at five degrees servicing the broken truck outside, which is not ideal. That'll probably cost us. Cause we can't, the station roof.
For us, but.
Well, the station roof's not high enough to service the truck. Uh, I'm not ready when I'm ready for your special.
Okay, so, um, do, do, I guess.
We should vote on that.
Vote on that, okay.
Do you need to set a time or does that come with?
Let's do it at 10 o'clock.
Let's do 10 a.m. again.
10 was good.
Yep, 10 seems to work fairly well.
Yep.
So, would you agree, Mr. Turkey? I mean, that, I mean, it gave us enough time to get things together
Yep.
And have people come in a little bit late and still have everything set up and.
You see my Saturday?
Warn it. We're gonna say that you can start registering at 9:30.
Yeah, that will help, that will help.
Cause we just didn't get an opportunity to get out last year because of COVID and that's part of what hurt, is it just, we're hoping to be able to do that this year.
Yeah, no outreach is tough, right.
So I'll make a motion that we schedule the special town meeting to consider the funding, um, for the new fire station or the new, um, let's, let's make it official here.
Fire.
The new fire and emergency operations center, um, on April, Saturday, April 23rd, beginning at 10 a.m. in the school gym.
School gym, yep.
And I'll second that motion.
Is there more discussion? Hearing none, I'll have the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Anything else with any of the town meetings that we?
This has answered all the questions I had.
All three of them.
You mentioned earlier that it was 112 people that came to the special town meeting and then it, it finished with 114 total.
Yes.
What do we know, what did you used to have pre-COVID on town meeting day?
About?
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Do you know the answer to that?
It's about half.
Similar.
It, it, it's, it's a little less.
I did figure that out recently. The, the last five years, it was approximately 100. There were one year when we only had 80 or so, but there were also years when we had 120.
Yeah, I hope we keep visiting that issue. I really was not happy that I couldn't come and I really wanted to wait.
That's reasonable.
But yeah, I mean, it looked like a regular.
I have to take a test in two months if I miss eight hours of class. So I'm sitting home in, in team's hell.
I also was working that.
He was working, my wife was working.
It was, it was, I would say it was well attended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For a Woodbury meeting, yeah, cause that's about what I remember. I think the high watermark may have been in the 160s at one point, but.
Say it was well attended. A whole lot of space left in the gym. Subject to be there, I guess, and that helps. Or some kind of controversy.
Alright. Other follow-ups in business? We got ARPA?
Yeah, so we have a couple of folks from the ARPA committee here. I thought we would just.
You're just here or just, you have a meeting coming up?
Couple nights from now.
Wednesday night.
Okay, 16th, right?
And they're gonna be able to use our.
Yep.
Our zooming.
I will be there as the technician to.
Thank you.
I'll be there as well.
You don't need my help with that stuff.
Engaged.
I can run Zoom and, and it depends on how many people actually log in remotely. They might all have to be muted and if they have a question, put it in the chat and I'll make sure that's passed.
We, we could maybe go over that right at the beginning, if we, especially, so right at the moment for this meeting, um, Tegan is, we have a, uh, actually I got something.
If you go on the Leagues of Cities and Town, there's an actual thing.
Unless you all are going to just do it.
So just so you know, I set up the Zoom so that people were muted upon entry.
Good.
So then, and I also, on the announcement, it says, I'll direct all questions to the chat, so.
Exactly.
Good, perfect.
As long as there's a moderator, it's easy.
Yep, and we just wanna record it, that's the only thing.
So should that go up? Do you need me to run the Zoom?
Yes.
I can't run Zoom.
Well, this is what we're doing tonight, um.
This is our test.
Is designated to all of this equipment and Tegan, we had, we have, we had to acquire a new laptop. That's something I probably.
Is that what this is?
This is my laptop.
Okay, you've got a new one.
That's the new one.
That's our.
We have screen envy, by the way, cause you have two screens.
And Tegan, Tegan, um, and I actually was able to monitor it too, but, um, so that the idea was, um, especially, and this will be more important when there, if there are a lot of people, there were, we're not a lot tonight, but. Um, so this is pretty much designated to run the equipment and then, um, another person, um, tonight, it's Tegan was kind of watching the participants, like, like if somebody new showed up, um, and the person doing that, I'll actually just kind of be sitting there. So I could probably do this part two, um, of monitoring, um, the people that come in. Cause once this is all set up, I don't really have much to do unless the, the mics aren't working, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you.
Somebody just needs to do it, whether it's you or Mike.
Yeah, and we could, we could both do it actually. I can make you a co-host, um, or actually you would have to make, how's that gonna work?
You're gonna have to make the co-host.
Did you set the Zoom account up to use co-hosts?
Yes, the, the, all Zoom, all Zoom meetings have, there's that, have an option.
Yeah.
It's the per, I would probably actually start the meeting, um, and setting it up, I would actually be opening up the meeting. What time did you set the meeting to start at?
6 o'clock.
Okay.
I'll come whenever needed. Probably I should just watch you learn.
Okay.
How to set, you know, how, how the equipment works.
He says you could help him clean this up tonight and that would be helpful. So one of the things you, I was gonna suggest and for the new board, if they're gonna do this moving forward, is the Leagues of Cities and Towns on their website has a one-page thing that I read on our meetings that I do for the mutual aid system. Um, when you get a lot of folks coming to your meetings, a lot of outside public with diverse opinions and views, once in a while you'll get, uh, people that try to sabotage your meeting. So it's a blurb that you read, which tells people that if you're not on the agenda, you can speak in the public comment section, you get two minutes. Um, everyone needs to identify themselves, so for example, we had somebody put pornography on the screen one time through the meeting. This is what you gotta, this is why you read this, and if someone won't identify themselves or who they are, they'll get, you have to boot them out, you're gonna, you read all this stuff in beforehand, and if there's one number. So I would suggest do that, but, uh, I've had to learn. To manage one of these meetings, the, the hard way.
So did the state house.
Yeah.
So, so the, the co-hosts have the ability to, uh.
Shut off.
Shut off.
Yeah, but sometimes it's too late.
Probably, well, we just, homeschoolers, we just did a big meeting where two hundred homeschoolers were in on the Zoom meeting. We shut all their cameras down, the mics are off.
Cut the cameras, but again, what it does is gives the, the rules, so it says things like, if you don't speak out, if you wanna, what you've already started, but you read it right in the beginning, so you can look on the league and see if that's something you wanna use, and I would suggest to the new board, Chris.
I agree.
Do the same thing, but so you don't get your meeting hijacked.
So get that together. Yep.
Cause it happens all the time, because having gone to meetings where there's maybe a hundred people in it and a lot of outside, it can get a little dicey.
Can, can you find that, is it easy to find?
I can probably find it again, I have it in my stuff.
No, that's okay.
Yes, yes, right in the league, you can't, I have it.
You don't have to do.
It's on my, it's on my computer at all.
Yeah, you can't, you can't miss it.
Yeah, I, I actually found it there, because I think you mentioned this in the past meeting.
It's really wise to do, cause it lays the groundwork.
Didn't quite pertain to us because of the.
What you would do is use what you're gonna use, but what it would do is set the ground rules for people. And just their understanding that you won't, you'll be removed from the meeting if you're unruling. If you start, uh, you know, taking off with your meeting, for example.
And one of the things that we found out this evening is that, you know, there's three laptops here.
You gotta shut all the mics off.
They have to be muted because, um, you know, the audio is actually going, yeah, there was, it was kind of interesting to listen to, but.
Not helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Town hall renovations.
Yeah, so, um, the, we have scheduled, um, the, the closure of the attic. With the bad excluders, it's, it's, uh, the schedule as it is now is March thirty-first, and. We got, um, you know, somebody communicated with Fish and Wildlife and the little brown bats, uh, which are endangered species, but that's the main resident up there. They're not there right now, um. But they tend to show up, um, as soon as it kind of warms up in the spring, like early April. So we're a little worried that if we have an early spring, that they might be back.
We've had some warm days, that means we'll be punished in March.
You're probably right.
We will, second and third week of March, it'll be cold and snow.
So we'll probably see if they could, they said that, you know, they kinda wanted to wait until it was a little bit warmer to do the work, but you know, it would have been easy to do the work last week.
Yeah, or next week, it's supposed to be warm next week too.
So.
Thursday's supposed to be fifty.
Rain on Thursday.
Yeah, so probably contact them again, um, and see if they could come earlier. And we, I think, um. Somebody on the committee has contacted Jen Lewandowski, is that true, Diana?
Yes, we're, nothing, yeah.
So, um, so he'll, I'm not sure when he's coming, um.
I think sometime in, earlier in March.
Okay, yeah. And I contacted, um, the contractor that's, that did the, uh, energy audit for the town office, and he said that he would do, um, the town hall also. Uh, then I sent him an email about, well, when do you wanna do it, and I haven't heard back from him, so I'll probably ask him again, um, maybe tomorrow. So we've got things kind of lined up to get stuff started, and, um. And I know that we're kind of curious, um, you know, with the ARPA informational meeting, how much of. What's happening, you know, what we're thinking of for the town hall would qualify for ARPA funding, I mean, the, the reason that we're. I mean, the town hall needs to be fixed up anyway, um, but a big part of the, why we're, this is kind of inspired us to do this now, is that. That really probably will be our main meeting place going forward, um.
I wrote to Katie about this yesterday, um, from, what would you say, City and Town, she did say that it doesn't matter about the ownership issue, that was something that has come up, is, you know, does it matter? That it's not owned by the town, she said that that's not an issue, and she said that renovations to a town hall are right in keeping with ARPA fund guidelines.
Okay.
That was her answer.
Yeah, it is a strange deed, um.
We own it, it's just it has a deed restriction.
Has a deed restriction.
Yeah, we have to.
We own the town hall.